The goal, obviously, is to get both sides to get what they need, sometimes things that they want, and yet still be respectful of the community resources that we are working with so that we're responsible with those. I also learned through the process that sometimes, based on things that are happening beyond our school district, it might be state budgeting or national information that we're getting, sometimes we've been required to reopen a budget for bargaining discussions. In fact, we've been warned recently that that could be happening for us in the future, that we should be flexible. So those are, I think, some things as we go through the bargaining process, that it's important that we're very clear on what's happening within our community, we're clear on what's happening in the state so that we can make the best decisions possible and get our kids what they need, get the staff what they need so that we can have that retention and everyone can work together. Thank you.
What is a union? All it is is keeping management honest, not you to taxpayer. So when you go into negotiations, the teachers' union wants one thing, the public wants another. I went to school board meetings where there was parents up there saying, "I can't afford another $300 on my tax bill." Now, I have a tax bill here. If anybody wants to see it afterwards, I'll show them. Most of our monies go to the schools. But is the product good? Is the product the best? Is this product is giving them $91,000 a year? I think that one of our board members said. I believe his name was Rhodey, if I'm not mistaken. But that's what a union does. It keeps management honest. And whose management? McBride. Once this contract is done, the union people go up there and say, "Wait a minute, I have three weeks vacation. I got four, you only gave me two." But here in Lockport, in our school district, 33C, you can take a look at this here. We pay a lot of money in taxes. And is the product good? Out of the state of Illinois, this school is 145. You think they need more money? Is the product coming out what we want? Are they going to school? Are they going to college? Are they going into the workforce? Is the parents coming to the board meetings? I am honored to be up here with such great people. This is something that you didn't have to come out for. But these stands should all be filled with the parents to find out what the board is because the board is where it starts at. It starts in the grade school. It starts in the high school. This is where it all starts, our government. That's why I love this United States of America. And we... I'm sorry.
Thank you.
So as a teacher, I've had the experience working under several collective bargaining agreements. While many receive negotiations to be primarily about salary, they also encompass more important contract language that impacts working conditions and the overall educational environment. Lockport employs an interest-based bargaining approach which emphasizes collaboration and mutual gains. When you step to the table, I think it's important to foster trust and collaboration between the two groups. That'll keep the lines of communications open and progress moving forward. Actively listen to the concerns as a teacher and admin. You know, I hear a lot about the product of the students or what we're producing. But realistically, I don't think the whole... Many people who are not in education understand the concerns that are happening in school. It is not the schools from 1980s, 1990s. We're dealing with attendance issues, chronic absenteeism. And all of those concerns have to be brought to the table because I think when we talk about negotiations, it's important to understand that part when we talk about the language in the contract. I also think, as we talk salaries, negotiations are going to get more difficult with salaries because teacher retention is going to be more difficult. The tenure laws have changed. Teachers are going to leave for more money by going 30 minutes north of us. It's happening. The North Suburb schools are recruiting teachers from the South suburbs. So it is going to complicate, you know, negotiations if we're really talking about keeping the best teachers here. I understand there is an element of fiscally responsibility, but that is something that needs to be, you know, in the back of everybody's minds when we're approaching negotiations. Also, I think board members have to be, you know, explore creative solutions when the two sides can't meet. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm new to the collective bargaining process. I have not encountered it professionally nor during my short time on the board. However, my responsibility as a board member is to learn. I understand that the board's role is to approach the collective bargaining process with the union in good faith on matters like wages, benefits, working conditions, and other terms of employment. My approach will be to listen, understand how the labor-management relationship functions in the district, and be mindful of how board actions and communications impacts that relationship. I will also work to distinguish between labor relations and human relations, treating all parties with respect, empathy, and active listening throughout the process.
Thank you. For question number four, James Sheikh. In your view, what has the district done well over the last five years? And what do you see as the opportunities and challenges in this district that you can positively impact?
Last five years? I know the last 10 years, the school rating went from a nine out of 10 to a five out of 10. That was in the last 10 years. I know that every single year, the levy is raised and the taxes are raised. And I know that, like what Jay said, according to the stats, Lincoln Way graduates more people than us. They spend less money than us. I know that our kids kind of basically got cheated out of an education for two years in 2020, in 2021. What has the school board done in a positive manner? The school board votes 99% in agreement, yes, on pretty much everything. I mean, I don't see any questions being asked. I don't see any arguments. I don't see any debates. I don't know what they've done. I really don't. I know what they've done wrong. And what they're doing wrong is they're pushing people out of their houses due to these high taxes, okay? That's why I'm here because I want to protect the taxpayer and the kids' education. All right, so 38% for language arts and 39% for math is not acceptable. You know, I hear, I heard this at least a couple of times already. "We need great teachers. We need good teachers." You know how you know if you got good teachers? You ask the kids. One bad teacher can ruin your entire school year. One great teacher can change your life. You ask the kids who the good teachers are. They'll tell you.
Thank you. Having two girls that have gone through our school here, we've been able to see really wonderful things that, opportunities that our kids have had. One of the opportunities that I've been very impressed with through the district is the opportunity for students to make connections for the real world and have experience with the real world by starting businesses and allowing them to work within the programs that we have established through the city where the kids can come and connect with different officials in different capacities. My daughter was one of the kids that got to go through the program and she connected with our city lawyer. And she discovered that she didn't want to be a lawyer. So April 7th, she will be leaving for the military for time of school. But that real-world opportunity was priceless for our family. And it is one of the things that they do really well. And the music program is absolutely incredible. And I've seen our little girl grow in that immensely. And that is just, in my mind, some of the extracurricular, if you will. The one thing that I think we do need to make sure that we're focusing on in the future is making sure, I know that I've said this before, our curriculum needs to be professional-grade curriculum. In other words, it's not curriculum that's just being made by staff. It should be something that is professional and it's professionally reviewed. And I want to make sure that that's what's happening for our subject areas. Thank you.
In the last five years, we had COVID. And I saw parents get together with their kids to teach their kids or to teach the young adults. It was fascinating to see this, how women or men, grandparents, got together with televisions to sit down to teach their kids. Now, as there's teachers around, I'm hearing that they didn't do well during COVID. I know my grandsons and my granddaughters did very well because the parents, the grandparents, were the teachers. Just like Wendy was saying, she was involved with her child. She brought him to a lawyer. She doesn't like lawyers. Now she's going into the service. God bless her. My... I thank you very much for her service and for what she's doing. But ROTC used to be here. And the other five things that I thought was football. Did you ever go to a football game? All the parents are there. The kids are there. The crowd's there. They're all into it. And where's... Everybody's cheering for their team. Isn't that what we're supposed to do for the students? You see it in basketball. You see it in hockey. Those parents are there. Those are the kids that produce when the parents are there with the teachers. It's just not the teachers. It's the parents. It's the grandparents. It's everybody involved. I don't see it. I only saw it in COVID. But when it went back, the kids are coming off the school buses. And if you want to say, "Well, it was good." The school buses were great. I mean, they'd come around all the time. But there's a lot of good things that are happening. But we need more involvement. And how do you do that with the parents? We could sit up here and say, "We're going to spend $91,000 or five more million dollars, but if the parents, and you are the customer, are not willing, then it goes down."
Thank you.
So I think Lockport's done a really good job with academic excellence. When you look at it, you have 29% low income coming from seven or eight... Sorry if I misspeak there. There are seven or eight different districts. And if anybody thinks it's an easy task for educators to raise the growth of kids from seven or eight different districts, I'm here to tell you, it's not, right? So when you take the higher echelon of students here, if they come here with any mindset, any student comes into school with a proper mindset, the AP offerings and the dual-credit offerings, you could leave here with anywhere from 18 to 24 college credit hours before you graduate. That, to me, is a school doing the right things. When I look at the Porters, the Porter pride is true. When you look at it, the support at athletic events and co-curriculars is unbelievable. My son was a soccer player. And the student support in this, in the super sectional, the sectional, there is 150, 200 kids. It's unbelievable to watch the student support here. The alumni coming back to teach here speaks volumes on what this school is about. The community members that teach and coach here and that also have their own kids come here speaks volumes about this school. Does every school have flaws? Yes. But to me, that's what Porter pride is all about. The coffee shop. So we were looking to start the coffee shop at Sandberg. And we toured it here. And I don't know if anybody's seen the coffee shop here, but it's run by the special-needs students. And it is amazing to see how innovative this district got to help the student, you know, students with special needs run a coffee shop, give them a job, and basically work for the teachers and the students. Financial management. We lowered the tax rate. The Will County increased the assessed values. That's the increase in our taxes. It does need to be lowered. I don't disagree with you, but that's the state of Illinois for it.
Thank you.
In my opinion, the district is doing things well in many areas. One of the most notable is communication with the students, parents, and the community. As a parent, I have personally benefited from the website overhaul, which is now more user-friendly and informative. The LTHS app is a quick way to access school information and communicate with the school. Also, the district has created the LTHS weekly message via email that comes out every Friday. This sums up the week. And then the principal's Sunday message comes out via phone call that goes to guardians each Sunday, outlining what is happening in the coming week and announcing upcoming activities. The district is making strong efforts to communicate with the community. For example, it held 39 community informational meetings, 11 campus tours. It has held community open houses, issued a community survey, convened three community forums, as well as created advisory groups, of which I've met Paul and some people in the audience through my participation as a community member and now as a board member. The district is using all of its tools for communication, social media, including YouTube, texting, website feeds, phone calls, voicemails, and emails to reach parents, students, and community members where they are. Staff and administration continue to look for ways to learn, improve, and innovate. The district has created many opportunities to foster direct student interaction, conversations, and feedback on issues that concern the students. The administration fosters direct feedback with the board through the student council, the student superintendent advisory council, the principal advisory council, and the student board members. We actually have students who are part of the board. The students discuss their issues of concern, their needs, and develop communities to research and arrive at solutions. In essence, I could really go much longer. There is a lot to be pleasantly pleased with by the district. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I would agree with many of the things that have been said. But I would say, for me, the biggest thing that sticks out is when the ceiling collapsed last year at Central Campus. I was incredibly impressed with the administration and the staff getting our students back into in-person learning within, it was like within a week. That was an enormous task, between getting the building ready to host 1,000 people every day and moving furniture and redoing schedules and redoing buses. That was a huge lift. And they did it incredibly fast and efficiently. So that would be my number one. Number two, I'm a father of two, that, two students here at LTHS that are heavily invested or involved in the arts program. They're sitting in back, actually. They're embarrassed now. But I think the school does a great job in the performing arts extracurricular program. They have lots of choices. The products that they've brought out are amazing. And the kids have lots of opportunities. More globally, though, I would say, I think the district's done a really good job of securing a financially sound district. And it's a good thing that they did because we all know the referendum didn't pass. And I've toured all the buildings, the both buildings, several times. There's our things that we need to upgrade and change and bring into modern teaching standards. And having the, having the resources of a financially strong district, we can now do that. Just really quickly, I'd like to look at the bell schedule as well so our kids can explore more things in electives because between the graduation requirements and being competitive when looking at colleges, there's just not a lot of time for them in our current schedule to, to explore more of their interests.
Thank you.
This was a question that was really not hard for me, but it was almost like too lengthy. So I'll try to keep it under that timeframe. But yes, the district has accomplished getting more students enrolled in AP and dual-credit courses. We have established great partnerships with Lewis University and Willco to provide valuable experiences to students, exposing them to real-life contexts and challenging academic opportunities. We have internships within the community and the Will County Development Program. Compass has been widely accepted by the students and teachers. It attempts to help the students succeed in their classes. The district has done excellent in the public relations by having transparent communication, direct mailings, website contact, school and community events. These efforts strengthen the bond between the district and the community. On the financial side, yes, the tax rate has been being lowered each year. And this year and last year, we abated our debt service bond back to the taxpayers. So the challenge that the district faces is really community input. The board is always seeking ways to get community input. A few months ago, the board sat down with an uncensored group. We were able to learn that we had common ground when it comes to the school and to the students. We need to have more of those conversations between the administration, board, and community members.
Thank you.
So I think one of the highlights of the last five years is exactly where we're all sitting right now, in this room. The renovations that have happened to this room, to the rest of the East High School building as a whole are amazing. The school is well-maintained. Its landscape's well. It's clean. It's bright. It's fresh. Walking through these halls is nice. I'm, I have the luxury of walking through and visiting multiple schools and high schools across the whole state. And by far, the Lockport-Homerland area has some of the nicest schools. Unfortunately, we have Central Campus also that we know is not the nicest, newest, and most modern up-to-date school building. So over the next five years, that's where some of our focus really needs to be is the newly-elected school board will have to make a, a choice. Do we update and invest money in Central? Or do we look at alternate solutions? And that's, that's a hard choice. No matter what side you land on, there's pros and cons on each choice and option. Over the next few years, you're also going to have to look at finances and salaries. If you have to spend more money on updates and renovations or additions, you have to find that money from someplace. We know that the referendum wasn't a success. And it's unlikely we will get another referendum around here. So we have to be able to look at the money and the finances we have and how we can spend every cent and invest in our school district as a whole to make sure every student has access to academics, instruction, AP classes, electives, as was stated earlier. That's a lot of crucial things that need to be looked at very closely over the next few years.
Thank you.
When I think about what has been done right over the past five years, I don't have a lot of involvement after 2019 until my stepdaughter graduated in 2019. And one thing that I think was very beneficial for her that has continued is the Willco program and the affiliation with the universities that allows these students in high school to get a read on what they really want to do with their path beyond high school. And it really gives them opportunity to try those things out. And it worked out well for my stepdaughter, who now works in an affiliated field with the CNA program that she did. I think that these programs are amazing. Another aspect that I think has been great is the student board member appointings. It gives these young adults the opportunity to have their voice heard, to be able to really research and get deep, dig deep into aspects that students 10 years ago didn't even think about. And this prepares them for a lot of conflicts or journeys in their future that they'll be better prepared for. The dual-credit classes, again, prepares these students. Some graduate and are able to start college as a sophomore. That's an amazing opportunity. And I'm really glad that our students, our children are able to have this opportunity. When you look at some of the challenges, again, looking at Central, there are a lot of questions about how we should progress forward. And do we need to keep putting a lot of money into a building that we know in our future we're going to need to find a new location and a new building for our freshmen? Also, the proficiency rates. This is something that we need to look at, as Wendy said, for the curriculum, and see what we can do to close that gap. Thank you.
All right. So I spoke earlier about proficiency standards. And I want to talk about a couple of the things I think that the school is doing really well. Science proficiency standards, they are on their way up. They need to continue, but it's something that they're working on. The AP curriculum, the GAMES, I happen to have one of my children and they're in AP classes and it is preparing her well for college. Ninth graders. I think what we do here, the ninth graders, our freshmen coming in, the way that we're handling them as they leave that grammar school element, we are preparing them and they seem to be very prepared to make that next step into sophomore. And then, obviously, their junior year, which is extremely critical, especially for those that start applying for college because that's, that's what the colleges look at. They look at the transcripts of the junior year. The graduation rate. Now, yes, we're being outperformed by Lincoln Way just to the east of us by 3%, but we're still at 93%. There's always room for improvement, but I like that number. Couple of things that I think I want to see us put focus on. Obviously, the ELA and the math proficiency scores, they're, they're just, they're just way too low. They gotta come up. We gotta find out where we're missing it, how a school district just to the east of us is so excessively ahead of us and they spend less and they're paying their teachers more. That's something we really got to look at. You're paying your teachers more. You're spending less. You're getting better results. And we're putting our money in the right area. Athletic opportunities for our students. I want us to see us increase those opportunities here. We've got to use everything at our disposal. And I'm going to say it. We've got 107 acres and we're not doing anything with it. A solar farm, bad idea. With that being said, we just need a little bit more budget discipline. And I think we can answer and answer a lot of these concerns. And we can move 205 forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are at our final question. And Wendy Street will be our one to start us off. What are district outcomes that matter the most to you? How will you be accountable for them as a school board member? Can you repeat that first part? Absolutely. What are district outcomes that matter the most to you? The outcomes that matter the most to me
The outcomes that matter the most to me is that our students, when they leave here, that they're equipped to function in society in a way that helps them be successful. Whether that is going to Wilco and getting maybe a job in a work field, a labor field, whether that's going off to college. I want our kids to have options in front of them that they're ready to take on. And I cannot say how much the dual credit is. It so impacts every child in this entire district. And it does radically change some of their outcomes as well. I've worked with students personally that have said to me that they were so thrilled to get those credits that they had no concept that it was even in their future to be able to have college credits because they thought it was an impossibility. So the idea that that's something that we can offer our kids is incredibly important and it matters to me. I hope that as a board member, I can contribute to that to make sure that we're providing a pathway forward so that our students can be successful. Our staff gets what it needs, our community feels strong. And we do need to remember that our kids, as we're raising them through these schools, they're the ones that are going on in the world to be our caretakers, to work at the restaurants, to be, to change the tires, our oil, to be our doctors. They are our future.
Thank you.
Fairmont, Crest Hill, Lockport, Lockport Township, Homer Glen and Homer Glen Township. What matters the most to me? And the most to you is respect. We all want the students to respect each other. We want the parents to respect each other. That is one thing that we're missing sometimes in schools and as parents and as pupils. I hear it all the time. Once you give respect to the other individual, everything comes together. Everything is good then. Everything comes. It's part of you then. You might not like the person, but you can respect the person. And how would you be accountable to somebody like that? That's what I would do through my actions. I would go through the schools, I would stand right in front and shake hands with every individual walking through and give them a smile. Because some pupils don't even get that smile at home. Again, it goes back to the parents. When I listen up here, they're talking, kids, their curriculum and everything else, maybe 25, 30% graduate through college for this whole nation. What about the other 75%? Are we giving them the attention and the respect that we should? I know I came from a family of 13. There's everybody in my family. You can name it. And they're there. But there's one thing we do do is respect each other. And that's one thing I bring back to my kids. You respect everybody in that classroom. You respect your teachers, you respect everyone. If you have a problem, you come to me or your parent. We have to get parents back into the schools to see what's going on, everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I'm going to stick with academic excellence. So I'm going to stick with academic excellence. Continue to offer AP courses, but increase dual credit courses. I think there needs to be a way to incentivize teachers getting their master's degrees in their specific content to increase these dual credit opportunities. It is the fastest way for our students to go to college as a sophomore. But I am, I'm not going to lie, proficiency scores do concern me also. But sometimes success is not measured by how a kid finishes junior year. What was the growth from what they came in? That's what speaks volumes about the education. We need to start measuring them as freshmen, intervene early and follow them through the course of their four years to see how much they grew. Not only will that help increase students meeting or exceeding, but it will also help determining how our system is working. And I think one of my favorite things is interventions. And it's something I built at Samberg for math because a lot of students are coming in with lower math scores than they have historically. And one of the things is less about the grade and more about what you're learning. And I've seen tremendous growth in intervening in specific target, learning target interventions that have really shown growth. So if we really want to see kids grow, we need to intervene early and stick with it all four years. I do think we need to ensure all students have access to advanced courses because I don't think every student takes advantage of the advanced courses we have. But also grow our CTE programs because we have to find pathways for every student, college bound or not. We need to help the unions, we need to help the trades. And that's how we grow our students to be productive citizens postgraduate.
Thank you.
Outcomes that matter the most to me align with the district's six goals. For instance, under the curriculum and support services goal, college and career readiness is a top priority. LTHS is making strong progress. 88.6% of the class of 2025, for instance, is enrolled in advanced placement or dual credit courses. And the district has developed six career pathways to help students connect their courses, experiences and extracurricular activities with real world opportunities after high school. Programs like the City of Lockport Internship, the Will County CED Summer Internship Program and the Eltown Grounds, the high school's coffee shop, provide valuable work experience and are gaining momentum. Meanwhile, the freshman on track to graduate rate and overall graduation rates remain high, which is another testament to the district's successes. These are just a few examples tied to the district's goals. As a relatively new board member, I'm learning that my role is to work collaboratively with the board, not as an individual making decisions, but as a part of a group ensuring that the district is well run. This is done by hiring qualified superintendent, maintaining sound financial stewardship, adhering to board policies and following state laws and mandates. Fellow board members also hold each other accountable to the code of conduct and oath of office that we swear as board members. Accountability comes in many forms. Financially, it is the board's duty to ensure the district remains solvent. The board president and fellow board members will hold me accountable if I am not adhering to policies, laws or my responsibilities, whether that is failing to prepare for meetings or not actively participating in a respectful and collaborative manner. Most importantly, I am accountable to the community. With roughly 76,000 citizens, 27,000 households, 4,000 students and nearly 500 staff members, I know the community will hold me to high standards. If I am not fulfilling my role to best my ability, I expect they will not elect me to serve on the board again. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the outcomes that matter the most to me are first, student achievement. We've heard it a couple of times. And that's higher standardized test scores, more access to advanced placement classes, like AP and dual credit courses, more students taking and passing the AP test. As was said, if you come in as a freshman, they might not be ready for advanced placement, but getting them ready by sophomore or junior year and taking and passing the AP tests and more career access to career readiness courses. Second, I touched on it before a little bit. I think we really need to look at the bell schedule or structure of the bell schedule. There's so many opportunities for the students at this school. And they just don't have room in their schedules right now to explore many elective classes. I think I think we also can't ignore that we have aging buildings and a really old building. And I don't see a referendum passing anytime soon. And we need to maintain that building and make sure that it's viable and usable and make it the best possible learning environment we can with what we have and with the means and funds that we have. As a school board member, I'll be accountable by listening to teachers, the parents, the students, and making informed decisions based on data. And ensuring that our budget aligns with the priorities set by the board and by the community. It's about making choices that serve our students today while having a strong school for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I think the district outcomes that matter the most to me would be the college and career readiness. I will support these programs and actively address potential challenges to ensure that all students have equal opportunities to succeed academically. As I stated before, I will continue. I want to continue the great programs we have here at LTHS has, as Paul and Candace have mentioned, with dual credit and AP courses. And like I said, these programs help our students become responsible, productive members of our society. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I would say what matters most to me is the success of a student. And success for each student might look differently. For some students, it's going to be to get into Harvard. That's their goal. For me as a student, that was never my goal. I can't even remember looking back at high school, what I learned in math or ELA or any of those classes. But I remember what I learned in music class. I remember what I learned in welding and small electrical wiring classes. Those are life skills that I've used throughout my whole life. The success of a football player might be to go win every night on Friday night. It might be to go get into a university and play football there, get to the NFL. Success for some students might just be to reach their graduation date and walk across that stage. Success for me as a student was just being able to speak in front of people. And here I am, talking in front of people and with a microphone in my hand. So everybody's success will be a different goal. And we need to be able to help all of our students to reach all their goals. I know we've harped a lot on ELA scores and math scores. I think everybody up here wants our scores to be higher. No one's going to sit here and say, we want worse scores, we want lower scores. Everyone's going to harp on that and hit that. I think everybody understands that's a need of focus. Everyone understands that fiscal responsibility is a need of focus. Our schools, our buildings are a need of focus. So this newly elected school board is going to have a lot of things they have to focus on that are big priorities. This newly elected school board will be hiring our new leadership, our new superintendent. So these are things that are happening and whoever gets voted into these seats will be responsible for making all those choices.
Thank you. I think you just read all my notes. Again, what I have here is that we need to look at the the students need to meet these ELA and math standards. We need to take a look at where these gaps are and how we can close them. If you're looking at the percentages, 99% of students participated. And with a 37% in math and 38% in ELA, that's an improvement from what the years showed previously. So taking a closer look at how we can close those gaps is really important. The college and career readiness program, again, that's something that I had in my notes as well. That is a great program and I think we could continue with that to make sure that students are prepared. In talking to a couple of teachers, I noted that just students being held accountable for their choices, day in and day out at school is something that they don't always feel supported with. And I think that we need to take a closer look at making sure that the students are, that the staff is being supported when students aren't following the code of conduct. And I think that for me, that's an outcome that I think is important. Because how are these teachers going to continue to come in there and have that culture and climate that's super important for educating students if the students aren't being held accountable for what they're expected to do? I think it needs to have a really, really close look taken at that and what we can do to work with the teachers to maybe change the language in the contract. How are we going to ensure that the teachers feel supported when they are upholding the policies that our board has put in place? Thank you.
Thank you.
Like we spoke about earlier, what are the district's outcomes that matter most to you? For most to me, it's going to be proficiency. We're here to educate the kids so they can be contributors to society. Whether they move on to trade school, no matter what they do when they leave this institution, college, they need to be prepared. Those percentages don't show that they're prepared, especially by looking at our closer neighbors. I get it, a lot of people don't want to compare us to other districts. Well then, how do we know where we're failing? How do we know if we're doing super great? How do we know if we're not doing that great? We have to look at the comparisons. Because A, we stand to lose residents if they want to move into our school district. B, we stand to lose really good teachers. So we have to look at that. That's the number one thing. The other thing that I think that we're lacking here is parental involvement. Okay? It doesn't seem like, it seems like ever since COVID, at least this is the way I see things, parents have been kind of pushed out of the school district. We got this, we don't need your involvement. I think we need to open that door. We need to bridge that gap. I would like to see more parent run committees in this school. That way, the parents are here to see what their kids are being exposed to and maybe we get some strong input and we can actually work with each other. I think that's a huge disconnect right now are the parents with the school district. I think that's something we really need to focus on. Thank you.
Thank you.
So obviously, what matters the most is the education. There's two things. So education is number one. That's what matters most in this district. Number two is we got to start cutting the waste and we got to start cutting the spending. I want to be a fiduciary for the taxpayer. Okay, because we are really getting hammered out here. What I really want to see is outside of the box thinking. Okay? Did anybody, so I heard this a couple of times. I heard low income, the low income kids, right? And our scores are down. Did anybody ever think of maybe having a liaison between these feeder schools to try to better prepare these kids to come into our high school? Maybe we can get some communication going with these feeder schools. I mean, here's some out of the box thinking. Parent run committees, like Jay just said, get the parents more involved. Parents know their kids better than we do and better than the teachers do. You know, out of the box thinking. So it's these robotic answers with these generalizations and we're going to do this and that. The other thing, this has been going downhill for a while. Okay, we're circling the drain here. And we can talk about all the great things. And listen, there are great things. There's great things, there's great kids, there's great students, there's great teachers. Okay? Our smart kids are getting punished. Right? They don't want to go to school because since they're smart, they're getting more homework. All right? Our lower achieving students are getting punished. Right? They want to do good. Kids should want to go to school. They should want to go to school. It shouldn't be a fight to get your kids to go to school. When kids want to go to school, you know something good is happening in that school. And we need some out of the box thinking to try to get there, try to get these kids and these parents more involved.
Thank you. Well, thank you. Thank you all for being here this evening. Thank you all for, thank you to my guests for being here this evening. Thank you for attending tonight's forum. We would like to express our gratitude to the candidates this evening for taking time out and the engagement to the community. And thank you for supporting Lockport Township High School's District 205 for your participation this evening. Thank you to our volunteers. Thank you to the high school. Thank you for providing this venue. I would also like to extend our thanks to Officer Bryce for being here this evening from Lockport Police Department and for ensuring our safety this evening. So thank you very much for being here. The LTHS 205 Foundation is going to follow up with all of the candidates to share their responses to the questions that were asked this evening. And they will all be made public. And they will all be made public on the social media platforms. At this time, I am going to invite all of the candidates to step off of the stage. And you can connect with all of our audience this evening and if they have any additional questions. So we have space available in front of the stage, outside of the auditorium. Please remember that we are going to ask all of our attendees to please exit by 8:45. That would just be lovely. So we are all here for about another half an hour. We have about another 30 minutes.